Please stand for your pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for those who have passed away in our community, including Teresa Sylvester, Attorney Jim O'Brien, and Kayden Rabender. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smell, here. Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Mr. King?
Here. We have a few proclamations tonight. Dr. Rothschild, I think, is going to start off.
Okay, so the first one I'll be reading is for Pride Month, and I hope that everyone in the audience is respectful as I read this proclamation, because I think the last few weeks, whenever I've brought up Pride Month, there's been some chatter, and I'd appreciate your respect. June 13th, 2023, whereas Pride Month is an annual celebration of the LGBTQIA+ communities' contributions to history, society, and cultures worldwide. And whereas in the United States, Pride is celebrated during the month of June in commemoration of the Stonewall riots, which happened in June of 1969. And whereas the Pride movement has grown significantly over the years, encouraging those members of the community to live their authentic lives despite growing anti-LGBTQIA+ propaganda throughout state legislatures. And whereas the city of Scranton aims to provide a welcoming community to everyone regardless of sexual orientation and gender identity. And whereas because of the great community organizations throughout northeast Pennsylvania, Scranton's LGBTQIA+ communities' voices are amplified not only during the month of June but also year-round. Therefore, Mayor Page G. Cognetti along with Scranton City Council members declare June 2023 Pride Month in the city of Scranton and encourage all cities to, all citizens, to uplift and support the LGBTQIA+ members of our community and their mission.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. I have a second proclamation here honoring Juneteenth, June 19th, 2023. Whereas Juneteenth commemorates the day freedom was proclaimed to all enslaved people in the South by Union General Granger on June 19th, 1865, in Galveston, Texas. And whereas this freedom came more than two and a half years after the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation by President Abraham Lincoln in 1863. And whereas although not a federal holiday until 2021, Juneteenth was celebrated for many years among the African-American community. And whereas on June 17th, 2021, President Joseph R. Biden signed into law the Juneteenth National Independence Day Act establishing June 19th as a federal holiday. And whereas in 2022, the city of Scranton declared Juneteenth a city holiday, encouraging city employees to reflect on the history of the holiday and celebrate the spirit of freedom that embodies Juneteenth. Whereas Juneteenth is a day to celebrate African-American freedom and achievements and to respect the history and culture that runs deeply throughout our community. Therefore, I, Mayor Page G. Cognetti, along with Scranton City Council members, declare June 19th, 2023 to be Juneteenth National Independence Day in the city of Scranton, encourage all Scrantonians to reflect on the struggles and sacrifices our ancestors made to give us freedom while realizing the importance of continuing to build a nation that truly reflects the self-evident truth that all people are created equal.
Please suspend with the reading of the minutes.
Third Order 3A, Single Tax Office City Funds Distributed Comparison Report, 2022-2023, year-to-date June 7th, 2023. 3B, Correspondence dated June 5th, 2023, received from Eileen Cipriani, City of Scranton Business Administrator, regarding the Nosman LLP contract update. 3C, City of Scranton Personnel Policy Manual, updated May 22nd, 2023, from the City Human Resource Department.
Are there any comments on any of the third-order items?
I have a quick one. So 3B, we asked for an update from Nosman, which was our lobbyist, and the information, the update we got was that this firm is in discussion with legislators we already elected to get us grants. The contract for Nosman and Associates was to get us grants. So could we expand on this information? Could you circle around and ask, can we see some, you know, dollar amounts, grants that we've actually received or are going to receive, not just discussions with legislators that, you know, are doing that for us or should be?
I will, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments on third-order items?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment on 3C. So I'd like everyone here to take note tonight. It's in the city code as well as the handbook that we have received in third order. I'm happy to see the handbook. But in this handbook and also in the city code, it states that city hires need to have the advice and consent of council prior to their employment. So I think tonight we're going to see a pattern throughout the meeting in which the mayor has consistently violated the city code for the last three years, employing individuals prior to council approval, starting on the job prior to being passed through us. So since around the second and, well, since around the third and fourth rounds of some of these positions, I'd like to see them coming before us before they start day one on the job.
Also, yes, fantastic, Mr. Schuster. I also saw that, but in addition to that, the handbook, which was finalized May 22nd, also states that when the mayor is seeking a residency waiver for a new hire, the waiver has to be sent down to us before the hire. So that's another area where the new handbook has already been violated.
With that also being said, looking at the city code, it states that if resident, if residency isn't, I'm trying to think of the wording, isn't obtained within the six months, they may be term, the new wording in the handbook is may be terminated, which does not, does not echo the code. So the code and this handbook are somewhat at odds when it comes to waivers.
Okay, so I think what we can do, Frank, if we bring that to the attention of the mayor, I'll, I did not have a meeting with the mayor this past week, but I will bring those concerns to the mayor's attention and see if we could make sure we rectify those issues that were brought up, and I think that they're valid concerns.
Yeah, just to specify that. So the code says be a cause for immediate termination, where in the new handbook it says may result in termination.
I'll clarify that. Are there any other comments on third-order items? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have announcements at this time?
Yes, I have a few announcements. First, we had the proclamation tonight for Juneteenth, so I wanted to mention that there will be the annual Juneteenth event this weekend. Trying to find the information for it here. You can find out more about it through the Black Scranton Project. They always have it up at their, their location over on East Market Street and Main Avenue. And then the other event happening this week is the Holy Rosary Block Party. That's going to be Friday night and through Saturday up in North Scranton. And I wanted to thank all those who had participated in City Pride Week last week and the garbage Olympic events and all the cleanups that were happening around the city. I think it was a really great way to work towards cleaning up the city, beautifying the city, and I was happy to participate over in West Side with the cleanup through Neighbor Works. That's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. I'd like to mention the Scranton Municipal Rec Authority Flower Show, Electric City Flower Show that was held this past weekend, extremely well-attended. I think they had double the number of people, booths set up. I couldn't believe it. I saw Norma up there, and I just couldn't believe how much larger it got this year compared to last year. That park was hopping. I mean, there were people all over the place, and it was just really nice to see how lively people were out and enjoying. And we actually had a beautiful day this year. It wasn't 105 degrees like last year. So it was, I want to thank everyone that was involved with that and congratulate you on a great volunteer event. And that's just a great thing for our city. So thank you all. Anyone else?
Yes, I was also at the flower show and was greatly impressed with the amount of people. I couldn't find a parking spot. When you can't find a parking spot, that means it's a very successful event. Also, so this Friday, even though it's a couple days after Flag Day, the Ukrainian Club is going to have a Flag Day party on Railroad Avenue, and it's Friday, June 16th, from 6:00 to 10:00. Entertainment by Drew Loomis. Hamburgers, $5.00. Hot dogs, $2.00. Macaroni salad, $1.00. So if you can stop by and celebrate with these vets, it'd be fantastic. And that is all I have. Thank you.
I guess I would have to say that the flower show was a huge success. Like Mark said, the parking lot, it was hard to find a parking space in the lot. There was definitely double the vendors as, that we had last year, that you guys had last year. And you received some feedback about young children, about getting them more involved. You guys did the scavenger hunt, and I will, I would have to give you a little bit of feedback. My son loved the scavenger hunt. He participated in the whole thing and had a blast doing it. So it made his day a lot more fun. We, I think we spent three or four hours there due to that scavenger hunt, and it kept them engaged the whole time. So thank you.
I have just, in case you haven't read it, Scranton has achieved an investment-grade bond rating from Standard and Poor's for the first time since 2011. I want to thank the administration, Mayor Cognetti, and the city financial team for all the work. And I'd also like to thank my fellow council members, Tom Schuster, Bill King, Mark McAndrew, and Jessica Rothschild, for all the work they've done in the past two years so we can obtain this. That's all I have.
Yeah, that's a good thing as well. So it seems like we're headed in the right direction.
I just wanted to add to, I'm sorry, the details for the Juneteenth event, the skate party that they're hosting is going to be Saturday from 12:00 to 5:00, and it's at 1902 North Main. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Please suspend with the read in the minutes, or excuse me, fourth order.
Fourth order is citizen participation.
Joan Hodoanis.
Joan Hodoanis, Scranton resident. Whatever happened to the public caucus of 5:45? Was I at the wrong place at the wrong time?
Unfortunately, we had an executive session that ran over.
Okay. Could you, in the future, when that happens, send someone in here and saying we're not having a public caucus or something, you know, for people who come early? Thank you. With regard to the city's website, the firefighter's contract is still not posted, even though the arbitration was posted in April. That is not the same thing as the contract.
I'll address that in fifth order.
Okay. And also, there is no property tax database, which we were promised would be coming. And the trash fee database is still dated as of February 28th. It's getting a little old. What is the status of the arbitration for the police union?
It's getting very close. Spoke to Attorney Upberg, actually today. They had multiple meetings in the last week, so hoping to get that closed out ASAP.
Yeah, I hope that we, you know, the, doesn't drag out between lawyers this and lawyers that before we see the final product. Once we do see the final product, I'll do a write-to-no request to find out how much we had to pay Upberg as labor counsel since he started back in November of 2021. With regard to the Standard and Poor's credit upgrade, yes, it was good news that we're now investment-grade. But if you read that eight-page document carefully, you saw there were some words of warning. They pointed out that the city still has a very low wealth and income level, which is a problem, and the city has very high fixed costs. For example, with regard to the 2021 budget, debt, pensions, and retiree health care account for 35.8% of the budget. That does not include the salaries and wages paid to employees. That's almost 36% of the budget right there. They were pleased that the city has a new auditor. They pointed out that we have a tradition of late audits and that the audit is expected in the early fall of this year, not next year. But that if it's late, it could be a reason to look at reexamining the credit rating again. It could even be downgraded. Not that there's any pressure here. And they also pointed out some questionable assumptions in the pension plans, the salary growth figure of 4.5% yearly, rate of return at 7.25%, vice what Standards and Poor's likes, 6%, and the ongoing COLA lawsuit. And then with regard to the personnel handbook, it was impressive, 85 pages. But 21 of the 32 sections, 2/3 of that document, might not apply to unionized employees, if you read through the document. So that means it only really applies to 12%. 88% of the employees are unionized. 448 of the 507 personnel in today's budget are unionized, 88%. So are we going to give new hires a copy of their labor contract in one hand and the personnel handbook in the other? Because the policies may be different. You've got four unions and you've got this personnel handbook. You have a possibility of five different policies? That makes no sense to me. Let's see what else. Also, I didn't see anything in there about performance evaluations. I saw the thing about overtime, which is going to have to be updated since you've got legislation pending. And of course, the residency waiver, which is supposed to be six months, but it looks like the mayor wants to have her cake and eat it too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hodoanis. Fay Farinas.
Fay Farinas, Scranton. Mr. Smell, I'd like to ask you a question. You used to be on the Housing Appeals Board. Do they have minutes at their meetings?
Do they have minutes of the meetings? Yes.
Yes. And how often are those meetings held?
It depends. You need a minimum, I believe, of three participants. So you would need three people to file, so, and then they would meet.
Is it every other month or every month?
Sometimes every month.
Okay. Are they held here at city council?
Yes.
Thank you. Where would you happen to find those minutes?
Should be on the city website.
I hear the right to know, and they said no record exists, denied. My request was denied. No records existed. No minutes existed. Okay. I don't know what's going on with this legislation for the overtime. Did you hear back from the city as far as if they wanted to change anything yet, Mr. King?
We did have discussions this evening.
Did they want to change anything?
There were some suggestions, yes.
Are you going to listen to them? I mean, as far as, will anything change with the DPW in their overtime? That's what I want to know.
I can't tell you that. There's a possibility that that might happen. I can't say that because I'm one individual.
Okay. Well, we'll see. But all I know is one thing. The mayor ran on transparency and accountability. If by chance the overtime for the DPW is not put into this legislation for record dates and everything else that Attorney Gallagher said, then there's no point in any legislation whatsoever. The DPW already has over $270,000 in overtime up until now, but no records and no dates. They did have one time they had records, nine snowstorms. There was only like six inches of snow all year. When are you going to have Rubicon come in? You said by May they'd be in. What happened to that?
We're waiting to get, I believe that we're supposed to get a report. Do we ever get a final answer as to when Rubicon is coming in here?
Not as yet, Mr. King. Director Petroface is going to advise.
They're supposed to come in, they're supposed to come in the caucus here. I'm hoping, if you could check on that and see if that could happen sooner rather than later. Appreciate it.
Okay, another thing. Rubicon. The mayor wrote me an email and said in there that in June she believes they're going to come full force for Rubicon. I'm paraphrasing. There's no way Rubicon could be full force until you have a second contract and include the highways department. Right now, only refuse and recyclables is in Rubicon contract. So at all highways, what's the point of Rubicon? Highways is the most abusive group of people in DPW of overtime. They use the most overtime of anybody. The director himself got $29,800 last year, Mistress Petroface in highways department. So unless Rubicon includes, gets another contract and includes highways, there's no point in having Rubicon because the only way you could track overtime is if Rubicon is tracking them, where they are, what they're doing. That's the only way to follow them. So someone better suggest getting Rubicon in their contract. Also, in the email I got from the mayor, she said that citizens, residents, are not supposed to be contacting employees. There's a process for that, and I believe it's called, write to 311 at Scranton PA. Well, if you try that, good luck because they don't reply. How many times have Marie, myself, and everybody else write to them and you get no response? And I believe since City Hall is closed to the residents, which we own, not the mayor, she has no right to closing this building. It's not hers. We have a right to contact employees anytime we want, and I certainly will. I absolutely will. And I have, and I still will. We pay for them. They are our...
Excuse me. Mr. Argent, this is several weeks now. Okay, I'm sorry. I apologize, Mr. Argent. Okay, and I'm going to give you your time back. I'm going to give you your time back. But we, when people are speaking, we need... No, thank you very much. And I'm sorry, Mr. Watkins, but I'm trying to, you know, we're trying to listen, and everybody needs the opportunity to be able to speak, so.
Thank you. So I hope you understand what I'm saying about Rubicon and everything else and about the fact that residents have a right to contact employees. That's why they had emails. That's why they have departments to call. I've called many departments, no problem whatsoever. I called Eileen Cipriani, I called Don King. I've even called the parks director, no problem at all. Very nice people. So for her to tell me I can't call employees, it's not going to happen. And I think City Hall should be open. We own it, not her. Okay. What about, I asked you last week, I asked a couple weeks ago, and I know you mentioned about the property of 1424 Myler, okay? You said the police are investigating that raid. Well, right now I'm concerned about, I asked you to find out if the city, who's paying the rent to the city? The city owns that building, and they own the building next to it too, on Von Storage. And the city's not supposed to be owning buildings and renting them out. But they've owned this building, the sewer authority, which is the city, have owned this building since 2016. I asked who is collecting the rent for that? Is that Howard Moss still collecting, the guy that owned it before 2016? I have never gotten an answer on that, but I'd like you to check into that. Because the city's not supposed to be owning properties and getting rent. And if they're not getting the rent, who is? People have been in there since 2016. This biker gang was in there for over a year. So how is that possible? Another thing, I had three denials, three write-to-no requests denied this week. One was the minutes for the housing appeals board. The second was recycling. The recycling document that says shall, they shall have notarized affidavits proving that the businesses and restaurants and bars all have private haulers. They shall, and nobody has done it. Cecilia Monroe, the recycling supervisor, that is her job and is also Director Petroface's. Now, he could have her do it or he could do it, but neither one of them are doing it. And that's another law that the mayor is violating. And I would like to know what's going to happen there. And the other one was DPW overtime. No records, no dates, request denied. So thank you, and I hope you could find out what I wanted to know about that property, who's renting it. And thank you, Mr. Smell. I appreciate it. And like I said, please try to get a contract for Rubicon to have the highways. Otherwise, there's no point in anything. And if by chance you don't get the legislation where the DPW has to report their days, their dates, the reasons, and the reasons have to be verifiable. And the only way to make them verifiable is to have Rubicon check where they are, when they're working, where they are.
Thank you, Ms. Brans.
Okay, thank you.
Mark Scorinci.
Good evening. We did about three months, I mean, three weeks to get up here. Finally got me a chance. I want you to look at this picture. Can I bring it up there?
Sure. And Mr. Scorinci, when you go back, can you please speak into the mic so we can hear you?
Okay, the middle of that picture is the firehouse, 1905 firehouse. And so that firehouse is on a truck route. You got these 20 ton trucks going down that hill. Someday, there's going to be an accident because that truck driver got distracted, and he's going to say to the judge, "I was looking at my GPS and I didn't stop in time, and I crushed that family. We need a new firehouse." I want you to take a look at this picture.
I thought you were going to point out the fact that there's a truck parked right in front of the firehouse, blocking the fire truck.
If you listen to my speech, not to any of the speech, then I want you to ask me a question. If that's how they did it, it means cooperation. And I worked there for like 20 years. When the sirens go off on those fire engines, what happens? It makes a very loud noise, especially that air horn. It sounds like a cruise ship. These firefighters, they don't hit the siren first and then the air horn. Sometimes they hit the air horn and then the siren. You keep doing that, and you're going to give an elderly person a heart attack. You will find the phrase scared to death. You, trust me, we're going to be scared to death someday. I live at Mulberry Tower, right across the street. I got here last month. I'm a transplant from Las Vegas. And so the noise ripples apart in that thing. If you see it, it's a U shape. And so because there's a building on one side and a building on the other, it echoes and it magnifies it. And all this noise is when the windows are closed in the nighttime. I want you to look at this one picture. So we need to build a new firehouse. That's not going to happen. There's no money for that. How about we put new windows in the Mulberry Tower senior house? That's going to cost millions of dollars. We'll find the money. I'll tell you what, there's not going to be really a lot of money to replace all those windows facing Mulberry Street. So here's the suggestion and the solution. It's in that third page that I gave you, the final page I gave you. That window sill is a large window sill like here. What we need to do is have a double window. You have another window on the inside that goes up and that goes down. So that window is soundproof, so we cannot hear any sounds. Because I'll tell you what, there's going to come a day. This might be my last, first and last before the city council. You can keep those pictures, but... You can keep those pictures, but there is a term called scared to death, and I went to the Chunko Funeral Home, and I said to the Chunko Funeral Home, "Put on my death certificate, scared to death." And they said, "Oh, no, no, we can't do that. We have to put natural causes." Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Scorinci. Mike Pasero?
Good evening, council. I want to start this off on a nice note and hopefully end it on a nice note also. I'm a proud Scrantonian, a proud Westsider, in my 60th year in the same family homestead on Academy Street. Can't picture myself living anywhere else. Mr. McCandless is a Westsider, and we remember Westside the way it used to be. Every morning, I'm up at 5:00, 5:30, and I'm walking the trail all the way, sometimes to Greenridge Street. To get to the trail, I have to walk through West Scranton. There is just an abundance of rundown homes, unattended to properties, garbage in the streets. Scranton just had a Pride Pick Up the Garbage Thing, a contest, and it was sad that I saw that one of the awards or whatever it was, was given, was for the most unique piece of garbage picked up. That's sad. That should never, never happen. Everybody that was in that, in that pickup should have been a lot of the dumpster to carry on their back. Two hours was just a miniscule amount of time to do that. As I said, I walk from my home on Academy Street, down by the ball fields on, over on Meridian, to the trail, around the viaduct, back up and around, and past Redners, and sometimes up Greenridge Street. Trail's nice, no problems at all with that. But just, it's disappointing, it's heartening, it breaks my heart that there are so many, and what I'm going to say, I don't want to offend any resident, but we have out-of-town and absentee landlords that are buying these properties that are a little sketchy to begin with, and slapping a coat of paint on them. I walk by these houses every day. I'm on the trail just about every day, so 365 days a year, I'm probably on that trail 350. Rain, snow, sunshine, whatever. There's grass in some yards that hasn't been cut in two years. When the snow flies and a Burger King wrapper ends up on the ground and it's covered with snow and it's in the ice, that's one thing, that's fine. And I walk past it, and I think this, you know, it'll be picked up when the snow melts. No, there's just three more Burger King wrappers on top of it. And it's, trash pickup, I'm sure there's an ordinance somewhere, I should have looked it up, that regular trash pickup, you're not supposed to put your garbage out prior to 24 hours. In the court behind my home in Rachel Place, my home's on Academy Street, Rachel Place faces Washford and Academy. If people miss the garbage on Monday morning, they put it out Monday afternoon, and it sits there all week. My question is, is there code enforcement officers? Are they overwhelmed? Why aren't they doing their job? I volunteer completely free of charge. Give me a citation pad, and I'll go out there. And I'm sure I'll come back looking for more citation pads. A blight hotline, I think there was a blight hotline at one time, it probably goes right to the mayor's office. It needs to not be, if there is a blight hotline, it needs to not be an answering machine. It needs to be manned. And I understand of staffing problems and, you know, manpower problems. Some of the addresses, and I'll leave you this list when I leave, the 1,000 block of Oxford Street, the South Edwards Court behind the Scranton Post Office. It's just garbage. You could literally fill a dumpster with the garbage behind the post office. And under the railroad bridge on the bottom of Luzerne Street going into Bellevue section, there's a strip of homes there that are just in the worst condition, and I'm sure they're owned, you know, out of town. There was one man that used to come to council who lived in the red home on the corner of Meridian and Luzerne Street, and he used to complain about, you know, the conditions of the neighborhood. He gave up the ghost and sold that house a few years ago. That house was a jewel on the corner. Now it's one of the worst. There's a junk car sitting right on the corner with 21 or 22 inspection sticker on Police officers, code officers have to pass by this vehicle. Across the street at that abandoned gas station, somebody dropped off a fiberboard wall unit, and it sits there. Underneath that bridge, you know, we want walkability for Scranton, underneath that railroad bridge, glass and garbage, and just, it's just deplorable.
If you would leave that list, Mr. Pasero, we'll make sure that code enforcement gets out there and they jump on it. They have actually been getting around quite a bit. But obviously, it's a large city, but absolutely, when these things are brought to our attention, they will jump on it. And plus that 311, when people submit complaints on there, I know that they do pick up on them and address them. So I appreciate you bringing these things to our attention. I agree. I taught in West Scranton for seven and a half years, I was principal at the high school for five, and obviously, you know, there's reasons why we have to have these cleanups.
It actually, it hurts. You know, like I leave the house and I'm in a wonderful mood in the morning, and I know by the time I'm on the trail, then I'm back off the trail and on the city streets. And it's, you know, and I come home and I'm in a mood. You know, like this is just, just absolutely...
Thank you, and I hate to cut you off, but we do have a five-minute rule. But if you could leave that, we would greatly appreciate that.
Thank you for the list, and feel free to email me. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Norma Jeffries?
Good evening, council. Norma Jeffries, and I'm a city resident, and I'm happy to be a city resident. And a lot of people ask me why I do what I do, and that I'm constantly out and about. And I'm out and about in doing because I do, I enjoy living in Scranton. There's a lot of things that need to be corrected, there's a lot of issues, but I like being involved. I thank all of you for the wonderful comments about the Electric City Flower Show. It was a lot of work that went into it, and Carol is our leader, and it was uncommon for my message to go off at 6:30 in the morning, and I know it was coming from her as to what we needed to do, and how we were doing and everything. So I just thank everyone, you know, that attended. You know, and it's so good when everyone on council was there, and they came by the table, people from the audience was there, you know. And when they come up and say, "Oh, hi, Norma," and to see their faces at the flower show, you know, it really makes you know that we're doing something good for the city. There was a lot going on on Saturday, you know, a lot of events, you know, that were taking place, and yet folks took it out of their time, out of the day, to come up to the park. We need more volunteers. We need more volunteers, because I wasn't even able to get away from my station to see all the vendors that were there, so that was something that I missed. But, you know, look for in the future on the Naug Park side, there will, we'll start to advertise for volunteers. And we got hit because of graduation, you know. We learn each year, so we got hit with graduation. So who thought that graduation parties would be held that day, and we couldn't get as many volunteers as we needed? So I thank all of you, I thank the residents of Scranton, I thank the residents of the surrounding areas that came and supported us. And, you know, I'll do all I can, and we can hopefully get a bigger team. The rec authority is there to also help in what we can do. So I say thank you to everyone. And another big thank you to the city of Scranton, because, you know, this is something new for us, and we didn't have our license a week before, you know, and we thought, you need to get a license. We do, you know. So I thank the staff and the city council, not the city council, but in the city hall, that did all they could and got us our license, because I don't know, would they have put us in jail, or what would have happened? I don't know. But anyway, we got our license and everything was good by Saturday morning. So the second thing I wanted to talk about was Naug Park, you know, that I call that my backyard. So I'm up there quite a bit, and now that it got warm in May, and to see people walking, young people, walking across the parking lot where these Geisinger people park, and they have their towels around their neck, they have their coolers, and you know where they're going. And like I said, I only live a block from there, and we hear the helicopters going over, and they circle, and they circle, and they circle, and you know what they're doing. They're looking for someone that jumped in to that pool. And the worst part is, when you see the little ones, they put life vests on their little ones and take their little ones down, because there's a pool of water that's sort of calm. But if that water is coming down from Covington Township and up that, Roaring Brook, and if it's, oh, it's just a nightmare, you know, to see them going over there. So I just pray that we don't have a disaster down there. I thought there was cameras down there, and I thought that it was being monitored by the police department, but I'm not sure. But I do see, and especially those warm days that we had in May, you know, it was quite active down there. It's kind of scary, you know, because I don't want to hear it, the helicopters going over. And what else do I have on my little cards here? Oh, yes, because the reason I thought of it too is that The Times did an article on the front page of the paper, and it's good and it's bad, because it's good because to let people know it's there and they shouldn't be there, but it also stirs those copycaters that want to go, "Hey, let's go try it out and see what it's like." And another thank you I want to give to city council for the proclamation for Juneteenth this weekend. Thank you, Jessica, you know, for mentioning that. And I'd like to get involved with it, because, I don't know about you guys, but I know I did not know anything about Juneteenth until maybe a few years ago. We were not taught that in high school. We weren't taught it in our school about the history of Juneteenth, you know. We knew that the emancipation came along, but nothing about what happened in Texas. So I thank Jessica for mentioning it, and if anyone can get out there on Saturday, I'll be there. And, you know, and I, like I said, I like running into people there at different events that I've met along the way in Scranton. So I thank everyone that was there.
Thank you, Mrs. Jeffries. Doris Kloski?
Good evening, council. Doris Kloski, Scranton resident. I'm going to tag a little bit onto Norma, when she was talking about everybody going down by the falls to swim. We will not eliminate that ever, but we are seeing people going down there that would never go down there if the pool was open, or there was a place for them to swim somewhere in the city. Because now you're seeing families picnicking down in the Lower Hamlin's Grove, and then just taking their little kids and going down into the water. They did that last year also. What brought me in tonight was, I saw something that somebody sent me when I was out of town that was in the paper, City of Scranton Naug Pool Complex Feasibility Study Update and Pool Complex Construction Design. It was in the paper, I read it, didn't understand it too much, but I was one, I didn't know why they, are they advertising for somebody to come in and do another feasibility study? And if so, I thought a few years ago, and I'll direct this to Mr. Smell, because he was on the rec board then, I thought we had a feasibility study done. I thought they had engineers come in also to sauna, whatever, sonogram or whatever the pools, to see how sturdy they were. Correct me if I'm wrong. And it seems like this is a stall tactic, like let's study again, and now we could push back the start of a pool later, and later, and later. So hopefully I'm wrong about that, but that's kind of my gut feeling, and maybe Mr. Smell can shed some light on that.
I will do that in fifth order. I'll tell you what's going on there.
I'm sorry, what?
I will tell you, I will say in fifth order what's happening at Naug Park.
Oh, okay, thank you. Okay, well, that's really all I have to say, and thank you, Jessica, for your proclamation on Pride Month, and for the proclamation on Juneteenth.
Thank you, Doris. Jack Watkins? Okay, is there anyone else that would like to be heard?
Tom Coinmanuka? I hope that in fifth order, when we announce the executive session that was just held, that there is more detail that's required for that announcement to give us an idea of what happened within that meeting. I also looked at the website and noticed that the HUP contract has failed, that it was put out for bid, and you actually had no one sign up for it. I'm curious if you're going to rebid for the HUP testing, get it out there and see if you can get another person on it, or if you might do what the mayor tends to do, is since there's no one there, just find someone and put them in the place, just because it's in the best interest of the city. Next week, I expected the three to two vote for the presidency waiver, but as it was brought up again today, it's quite interesting that it's against the city charter and against the new code in place, the employee handbook, that you can't give a waiver out after the employee was hired. The process is put it in beforehand. So it's going to be interesting to see if one of the first actions of this body, when the employee handbook is presented to them, is to violate the employee handbook, ignore the fact that it has to be done before the employee is actually hired, and waiver the waiver of the rules to give the exception. I expect that'll happen. Earlier this week, I received a rental registration card at my house. I appeared to City Hall and asked why, and they inquired if my home was a single-family home, if I was the owner or family. I said, "Yes, I'm family, and it has not been a rental home ever, from the time it was built in 1964 to 1965." I asked, "Why did I get this, and what database did they pull the information from?" I was told that I should just ignore it, that the city sent this out to every household in the city. I was told they had rental listings, but since it was incomplete, everyone is getting mailed a rental registration notice. And if you're not a rental person, just ignore it, because I guess they have no way to certify who has rentals anyway, so they're just doing a random scattershot approach. Since we're desperate for money, I'd like to inquire, how much money was the total cost for the printing and mailing of these documents? I noticed in the document, we have the planning commission. I have a question of how does a hairstylist qualify for a planning commission position? Name Shaquana Bennett. As she noted, Connie is technic, is not her name, it's a nickname, and using Connie is technically not a lie. I always like when it's prefaced with technically. The body should be aware that she takes mispronouncing a name in her own statement as microaggression. I mispronounce names all the time, and I figure that's just learning what another person's name is. I don't take offense to that, nor do I consider that microaggression. Last, I'm going to hit on flag burning. 6A. Flag burning has been attempted to be regulated five times and has failed in the Supreme Court many times. One comment from one of the Supreme Court justices was, "I may not like it, but I am not the king." Right now, open burning is under the scope of public safety, and as some are aware, the exceptions of fighting words, true threats, actions that endanger the public's safety, slander, and libel are covered by the First Amendment. But unfortunately, with this document, to cut out a specific exception that labels it as protected First Amendment rights squarely removes the flag burning from public safety and puts it into a move to suppress First Amendment rights to speech. By doing this action, by putting... By doing this action, by putting a timeline in beforehand for these protests, you take out the ability to control it under a safety issue which may be legitimate, and you put it into a conflict of a First Amendment speech that should not be violated and is protected. The law, as it's written in this document, in this ordinance, is actually contrary to what this body and the intention of it is. I would ask you to talk to your solicitor and take a look and see whether or not there's a better way to take a look at this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coy. Mr. Watkins.
John Taxpayer. I got a couple of concerns here with the park that the city's building up there where I live. They're putting B2 stone in there, this and that, which shouldn't be because they're putting rubber mulch on top of it. And there's no handicap swings for the handicap children. And they're putting a parking lot in there, like a two parking thing and this and that and everything for the handicap children and whoever parks there. And I got a problem with, with the drugs in my neighborhood. Enough's enough. The lady was slumped over today in her car, bada bing bada boom. It is what it is. They came, both. And that was it. It continues. But I would like to see something done up on Returning Bundy Street. It's gotta stop. I don't know what we could do, but it's gotta stop. And it'd be nice if we could get our alley done and get that paved. You're paving all the streets around here, but that alley hasn't been done in 19 years since I lived there. 19 years I lived there.
Mr. Watkins, what's the name of that alley?
Excuse me?
What's the name of the alley?
Oh, there is no name. It's on Returning Bundy. It's right there.
Okay.
And you can't miss it. 19 years I lived there and it's not even done. They paved my street and next thing you know, here they are marking it up, digging it up. I don't know what's going on there. But I like to see that. Another thing, I was down at the bus stop the other day. Boom, I had a white van pull up to me. Boom, guess who it is? I'm not going to say no names. Oh, you gotta stop talking about me, this and that and everything. Put two and two together, guys. I'm not going to say it. Why? Because I run my mouth? I open my mouth? It is what it is. But I like to see you guys do something, man. Come on. I'm a taxpayer here. I want to see something good for this city. And that's it. And what these guys do in this park, Joe Alkowski runs it. I even told the mayor, have them audit it. You don't want to audit them? Where'd $80,000 go? That park didn't cost $80,000. On the permit, it says 27.5. The permit, 27.5 it says on that permit. Where'd the $80,000 go? But I guess my word don't mean nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Mrs. Schumacher.
Sorry about my sneezing. Timing is terrible, but it is what it is. I also attended the flower show and had a good time and was impressed with the attendance. But I actually even won a raffle, so. I mean, that doesn't happen to me very often. Anyway, moving on, getting over there, I have, I go up there quite a bit. And the sign that says Arrow to the Pool Complex, I've asked before if that can't be covered over or taken down, but it just adds, you know, it's like putting vinegar on a cut. And then, oh, the, I cannot read my writing there, but I would say, on the fire engines, I live very close to Engine 10. And it's fairly close to my bedroom window when they do go out at night. But I really, I actually look at that as something good because I like to say a prayer for the people who are going out and for the people they're going to help. And so I look at it as something good, but. Now, effective January of last year, 2022, the city replaced the business privilege and mercantile tax with the new payroll preparation tax. So why are we still seeing the business privilege and mercantile tax? It's in, the first one was on 3A. So, you know, why?
I believe those are, those are catch-up payments or delinquent payments that they're still trying to recoup that were owed previously. I could be wrong on that.
Yeah.
We'll double check on that. Could you, Frank?
Thank you. Oh, 5I. I was, I was reading that and it said on the memo from the, from the Department of Law that in response to your request, we, to vest all in city real estate tax, refuse fee tax, and the code enforcement violations of Coney, I believe, Bennett, et cetera. So I thought, oh, I have nothing to do. I'll just go back and look at that myself. And I went to the assessors' page and I could not find a Bennett. I think there were like seven Bennetts. None of them were Lori. And I followed up on a couple of the other things. And, I mean, I understand, she's at 505 and North Maine Avenue, and she's a beautician, that's a beauty shop. But there's nothing to say that that's where she, well, that she owns it. There was nothing saying she owns it. So there's some misinformation, I think, in the backup on that. And then on 6E. No, no, forget that one. The one on, make a note here, but the one on the fire company wanting a special building for training, you know, it was back in 2017 that we had a, the Serenti. And as I recall, that was supposed to be our safety place and they were going to have all kinds of things. And it was for me so wonderful, all these people could, even from our area could come out and we might even make some money on it because they could, you know, they could sell this service. I went up there one day and knocked on a door. There was no action at Serenti. But also, I mean, why do we need another, another building?
Excuse me, this, this facility is going to have a burn house. And where it's located, they can, you know, they can practice putting up burning buildings where they couldn't do it in proximity where, you know, of residents where the Serenti Center is.
But that takes 2.3 million, million dollars?
It's going to be a training center also in addition to that, but training that type of application.
Okay. And then quickly, if I may, Meadowbrook, too. Are we measuring, is anybody measuring how the Ryerson Wall is leaning toward Wyoming Avenue? And does anybody do that on a regular basis? They do?
I'm looking at Frank. Frank, could we check into that?
I'll check into it, but I believe that's part of the Riley Associates Meadowbrook project underway.
They are doing it regularly? I would like to know.
The project follows along that wall, but I'll check on it, Mary.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Schumacher. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard?
Thank you, Frank.
Virgil Argenta. I have a couple of issues. The street clock in the 500 Lackawanna Avenue, for a couple of years now, it's been stuck at 11:20. Is there any kind of guarantee or warranty on that clock that we can get that addressed?
Mr. Argenta, I received an email from the mayor, because I brought that very thing up to her probably several months ago. There's a company out of Ohio that's going to come out here and evaluate, because it's kind of like a specialty clock, and they're going to evaluate and see what needs to happen to get that fixed. Because it's been 11:20 for the last 10 years, maybe, I don't know.
Also, the clock at the end of Washington Avenue in that little park there, that clock is also off. So maybe they could check the both of them. It's the same type of clock. The other issue, 1700 Dorothy Street, the Missy League. It's the season now for the Missy League tournaments. Last week, we had a tournament there. The road's been dug up for about two years now. There was, there's barricades, there's three, looks like they started a project as usual and never finished it. There's three manholes, the new manholes are there. It's loaded with gravel. There's about 15 barricades scattered around and certainly doesn't look good, especially when the parents and volunteers maintain that trip park, Little League, and it's a, it's a pretty pristine, you know, jewel to the city that we have. And I also got a rental registration or a form from the city. I don't have a rental. I went on the city's website and it says that the rental licensing rental app is currently suspended, waiting on data from the county. So you go on for the rental app and it's suspended with the city of Scranton.gov website. And one other thing, I'm also concerned like Mr. Pethery with the blight, and as you guys well, are well aware of that. And do we have a list of some type of an inventory list of city-owned properties and vacant lots? And is there somewhere where I can take a look at it and we can take a look at it? I had an open invitation for you guys and women to maybe meet up and do a walking tour. And if that's not going to happen, I think we're getting enough of movement right now that us city residents and taxpayers will take the walking tour. And if you can provide us with a list of vacant properties and city-owned lots, and we'll check them out and we'll report back to you guys. We'll be the liaisons. And also with the condemned properties, I have another issue here. I've been checking, like, the mayor likes to compare us with other cities, other towns. Well, I've called around in all other towns and other cities, when they have these condemned buildings and the grass is two and three feet high, they have a DPW crew or a city crew that goes out, they maintain them, they charge a fee. What we can do is when we charge it, take a log of what we're doing and keep, and we can go in and put a lien. We have enough solicitors to work with the housing and code enforcement. Assign a solicitor to file a lien on these properties and maybe we can, we can lien the property out of the value with our liens and take the property back. Go to court, go through the motions and take the property back. But condemning a property and you put the green sticker on a property that, that nobody's in and you give them 48 hours, who's going to comply? Let's bring our team out there, maintain the property, give them an invoice, put that invoice with that property, and we can move on from it and put a lien on the property. Whoever takes the property over pays the lien. You know, when you're looking for a loan, you don't do anything unless the lien is satisfied. Let's start putting liens on these properties, maintain them ourselves. It's the summer, get a youth program together with a DPW guy as the supervisor. Let's try something. Right now, putting the green stickers on and your little fancy orange and pink and all this color stuff does nothing at all. Nobody's, nobody's paying attention now to the property and nobody's paying attention when you put your sticker on and giving them 48 hours. It's just like, nothing gets done. Take, let's take it upon ourselves and let's do it. Whoever's in charge of the DPW, put something together for them. If you want to sit down, let's sit down and do it as a, as a group. I mean, maybe we put all our heads together and come up with, we don't always have to be buttonheads. Let's sit down like people that really care. If you really care about what you're doing, take us up on the offer. Let's clean it up and let's make a difference. I'll do it for free. I'm a volunteer, just like, like he would. We'll volunteer together. I'll put a crew of 20 guys together. Call me up on it. Have a good night. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Argenta.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else that'd like to be heard?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. Smurl, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I have a few comments. First, Norma, there are cameras at Naug, the gorge, and also on the, the bridge going over. There are cameras there. So if you see people going down, you just, you call 911 and tell them you see them there. They can see them on the camera at police headquarters. There are multiple cameras down there, though. Okay. These are a few land bank properties that we were at this weekend and cleaned up. One is at 520 Harrison Avenue. On that property, there are two temporary structures, I guess we'll call them, built in the rear of them. We need to send zoning up there or city code enforcement to see what they actually are. Frank, I gave you a copy of all this, so if you're going forward all of this. The second one was Prospect Avenue and East Elm Street. Pioneer Pipeline Company is there storing equipment and stuff. We cleaned all their garbage up and cut all the grass, the weeds and everything. So I have a request here also to send them a letter and ask them to maintain the property if they're going to be using it. The third one was 1423 Vine Street. That was also a lot that was used by, we don't know who was there, they can't remember the names on the trucks. But we cleaned everything else out of there and there's still a lot of blacktop left there, a lot of material that they use for patching the roads. But we don't know who was there, so I don't know if there would have been a permit for the Hill Section, if we could find that part out. Next thing is, I didn't forget about the people at the Roaring Brook, the FEMA debris removal part around the Richter Avenue and Myrtle Street area. That was put out for bid. We have all the specs on it. I don't know if we've received any bids yet, but we will find out this week. But that is going to be cleaned up. And there was a part, the embankment has been repaired already. The rest of it is just cleaning the rest of the river base out. And right by the bridge, it is pretty blocked up. My next one is my favorite one, the one I've been working on since I started City Council, and this is pretty much why I stay on City Council, is parks and neighborhoods. There was a, an RFP put out for the pool complex. There were some studies done at Naug Park. They were done by the Recreation Authority. We did have companies come in, look at the pools, see if we can repair the pools and stuff, but none of that happened. This is, has to be done. We need an entire park design so that we can move forward and apply for DCNR grants and other money. They're going to have a meeting Thursday evening at the Scrantonus Recreation Authority up at Naug Park. I plan on attending that. I have the entire RFP here, so we can go over it then, if you have any questions on that or want to know what is going into the park. And that's all I have for right now.
Thank you, Mr. Smurl. Mr. Schuster?
Real quick, the meeting on Thursday, what time's the meeting at?
I believe, Norma, is our meeting, your meeting at 6:00 PM?
Okay, it's at, it's at the rec meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you know who's going to be coming in to present that?
No, no one from the city. This is, I was invited by Mr. Gattens to go over it with the Recreation Authority.
Gotcha, okay.
Just to get more ideas. But there's a lot more, too. There's a lot more, there's going to be scheduled meetings. There's four public meetings going to happen. But that's all in this, in the RFP. If you want, I'll give you a copy of this.
All right, yeah, I'll take a copy.
Okay, thanks.
It was mentioned in, well, I don't know if you want, want me to just take over?
I don't know what you're going to say, so go ahead.
All right. It was mentioned in public comment, the article in the paper the other day about this study. And I don't know if you took note about, I'm trying to think of who brought it up, the mayor's comment, because I think the mayor... the mayor's comment, because I think the mayor leaned towards not having a pool at Naug. Just to put that out there. We got a couple people coming up tonight about the rental licensing. I myself received one of these, I do not have a rental property. I think several other council members got them as well. I got a couple of calls from a couple of friends that also had rental properties. There was somewhat of a answer from our, let's see who it was, our rental regulation manager that came out to one of, the council received an email from a city, from a citizen of the city, about the same thing, and they responded that the county had a database, and they used the county's database to send out these postcards to the addresses. I don't know how accurate that is. From public comment tonight, it seemed like one of the people called, and they had a little more information, and the information said that it went out to all city addresses. I'm not sure if that's the case. But, Mr. Volenberg, if we could reach out to our rental department and see if it did in fact go out to all addresses in the city, and what the cost of that was.
I will, sir.
Thank you. Last week, it was brought up, as we're talking about non-resident city employees. In public comment last week, I think the number was 0.8% of our city employees are non-resident. Mr. Volenberg, could we please reach out to the HR department and see if we can get a list of our non-resident city employees?
I will.
Also, did we get a update on the Weston Field bathhouse? I know last week, they said, on Tuesday, they were going out to assess the situation, and that we should get a response by this week, did we get that?
We did not, I'll follow up with the director.
All right, thank you. That's all for tonight, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Dr. Rothschild?
Yes, I know that it's been brought up tonight about the Naug Gorge and the swimmers and cliff divers over there. I did actually receive an email from someone, too, just a couple of days ago, about the same complaint, and they have pictures documenting people there, like 7:30 at night on Sunday. So I would like to ask if SPD could start sending some patrols over there on the weekends. I know that they have the cameras, but I think if they have an officer around at certain points, that might help to dissuade people from visiting there. So I'd like to make that request.
I'll take care of that, Dr. Rothschild.
And I do have a number of complaints about blighted properties, and it's that time of year where we're starting to notice those properties getting overgrown, especially the condemned ones. And so I'm just going to send that list over to you, Frank. And I think it is really frustrating to go around the city and to see all the blight, and I know it's really frustrating for me, and I feel the same way as many of the people who spoke tonight about it. And I think the more that we get the property addresses, then the better that we could work to address them, make sure that they're already on the list, and then we can provide you with an update as to where we're at with it, if they've received a ticket, if they need to receive another ticket, if it's being taken to the magistrate. Some of those things are already in process likely for that property, but unfortunately, it takes a while to come to resolution. But the land bank properties, we certainly should be taking care of, because the city did contract to maintain those, and I do appreciate Councilman Smurl taking the time on the weekends to be able to do that for some of them, like the one on Harrison, that's been problematic. But I do want to look towards a long-term solution for what the city needs to do about them. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Mr. McCandrew?
Okay, thank you, I have a couple of things. Guess what, I got one, too. And I'm hearing that people are getting more than one. So rationale being explained to you, Mr. Coin, by calling in is always send them to everybody. Well, if you're going to send them to everybody, you should put on the bottom, okay, we sent these to everybody, and this is the reason why. We shouldn't have to call. This reminds me of when the recycling calendars were mailed out to people in Dixon City, and the outskirts of Scranton, and then they had to be remailed because they blamed the printer. This, something's wrong. And this costs money. Guess what? So it's a poor excuse of spending money. The excuse is, we're going to send it to every resident, or every homeowner in the city, just to try to capture some landlords, it doesn't make sense. So I want to echo what Councilman Mr. Schuster said. Let's find out how much this costs, let's find out what really happened, okay? And let's kind of, we've got to stop this, it's a hemorrhage. Every time we mail something out, it's a hemorrhage.
Mr. Volenberg, can we ask them also for rationale as to why everyone? I mean, I don't know that I got one or not, my wife usually throws things out quickly, so I may very well have gotten one, too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I will.
When I was looking at that email, I know, I think some of you saw the email, that went back and forth between rental and that. I was trying to, I guess, ascertain what happened there. It seemed like one answer came in that email chain, and then it seemed like another citizen received a different answer, so it would be good to know what occurred.
Okay. Also, I have three emails, Mr. Volenberg, about blighted properties. 710 Philo, instead of me reading all of them, I'll just hand them to you at the end of the night, for time's sake. Also, some issues quality of life, and blight issues on 1604 Pittston, 218 Cedar. And them, you can, I'll just leave them here, Mr. Volenberg, you can take that later. And then I also got a nice email from Mr. Derek Rains. He's the gentleman who comes here with, very lovely gentleman, and his wife who come and has concerns about ADA compliance with the building. I agree, you know, we could do better, we should do better, we better do better. But he just sent me a nice, and he doesn't always come and complain, sometimes he highlights the nice things we do, or the nice things in the city. So he asked, and this is the exact message I got from him. "Good morning, Mark, could you share these comments, your comments on Tuesday night? Unfortunately, my wife has to work, and I will not be able to attend the meeting. I would just like to say, we had a great multiple sclerosis walk, and the group that was there really enjoyed it. And I also, excuse me, also, my wife and I went to the Flower Show this weekend, and that was just wonderful. Everybody enjoyed that, and thank you. Looks like $24,000 so far that was raised, and said thank you." So nice to hear from him, if he can't make it. And then, I want to report out, because you know, there's been issues with the pool at Weston Field. And I know we have a new parks director. So, you know, we brought him up to speed with the issues that are always presented to me by the lovely ladies that swim over there. They call themselves the Zipper Club. So I'd like to report out for them, because I know they're watching, but most of the time they do, that the Interpol at Weston is open Monday through Friday, 8:30, 12:30, and Thursday through Friday, 3:00 PM to 5:30 for family swimming. These hours consistent, except for on certain dates, which there is an unexpected event. You know, the smoke restriction and et cetera. The temperature issue, this was a concern last week, was fixed yesterday, 6:08. Great to hear this, great news. With a new pool heater ignition assembly. The pool temperature is back up, and all residents utilizing the pool report a wonderful experience. I will be getting certified, because we asked of this of him, the new hire, and he's, you know, now he's telling us, because this is great. I'll be getting certified to become a lifeguard. This will occur when my lifeguards become, I'll become certified. I will be taking the course with them, which is great. This date is to be determined, but should be within the next week or two. There are enough certified lifeguards currently to manage the two pool splash pad facilities until these lifeguards are certified, and the other two pools are ready for opening later this month. So I'm glad to report that out, and that is all I have, Mr. King.
Thank you, Mr. McCandrew.
With respect to the contracts, we found out that, what would it be, the fire, was it the fire contract and the police contract?
No, no, the police contract isn't settled or ratified. So the fire contract, the whole contract goes back to late, no, mid-'90s.
'96, I think.
'96. Which that means is, you know-
Excuse me, Mr. McCandrew, can we just ask for that in writing, get an official report as to what actually is occurring?
Okay, that's fine. So, Mr. Volenberg, let's ask for that in writing, you were there for this discussion. But we're asked all the time, especially by Mrs. Hordowanis, as to why they're not on the website. And we've asked that publicly, and we've asked that through emails and correspondence, and we never got an answer. Well, guess what, today we got an answer. And when we heard, I'm like, why didn't you tell us all along? I mean, people can handle the truth if you tell them, if they're aware of what's going on. So what was said to us is, they've had, the last, I don't want to say original, the last full contract in writing was '96. Everything after that was either an extension, or an addendum, or MOU. Which, okay, this should have been taken care of a long time ago, so there's no one to blame. But what they're trying to do is compile all of them and make them one. Once that occurs, then it'll be posted on the website. So there is a reason why it's not there. And I'm glad we heard the reason today, and it makes sense. So we're going to hold them to it. They said, hopefully, 120 days, excuse me, after ratification. Might be a little longer, we have to, you know, have some communications with the unions, but at least we got a real answer this time, and I hope, you know, you're satisfied with that for now.
And the executive session had to do with contract discussions with the Scranton Fire Department? Along with the DPW and the Scranton Police Departments, three of those contract discussions. Just a response to, for some of the citizens. Joan Hordowanis, this would have been from last week, the amusement tax for 2021 and 2022. Regarding amusement tax legislation, 2021 amusement tax actual revenue was $191,837.87. They had budgeted $50,000. And in 2022, the actual amount received was $300,814.54, and they budgeted $200,000. Delinquent real estate tax is on the city website. Council's working with single tax office solicitor regarding the placement of delinquent real estate tax information on the city website. Reese Schumacher, update related to Nazman LLP. Progress to date since March of 2023, report was placed in third order on tonight's agenda. And I know Mr. McCandrew would like further detail to that. But also, council was advised by our Business Administration Office that Nazman has worked with the city in completing the grant application for a Congressman Cartwright appropriation of $305 million for is it, $305 million?
3.5 million.
3.5 million. I was going to say, wait a second. 3.5 million for police technology. This has been awarded. In addition, Nazman has assisted in submitting the appropriation recently submitted for the EMS/Fire Training Center at the CTC. Regarding street sign program in the city, the $360,000 grant from 2021 has been completed. There's not a current grant for streets signs, however, the city grant writer is on the lookout for opportunities. Speeding on Theodore Street in North Scranton. We received a resident request regarding increased traffic, speeding, and stop sign violations related to the area of Theodore Street, in addition to Return and West Pass avenues, as a shortcut to both Kaiser and North Main avenues. Scranton Police has confirmed that the Highway Unit and patrols will monitor the area for violations. Legislation has been received for next week's agenda. Has additional stop sign and stop bars to be placed at Theodore Street and North Sumner Avenue near Neil Armstrong Elementary School. Environmental Advisory Council appointments. The Environmental Advisory Council appointments are staggered, so all do not expire at the same time. The question was asked, for example, why Bernie McGirl was provided a one-year term, considering his vast experience and leadership skills. The administration advised that they very much anticipate appointing Bernie McGirl to a full three-year term upon the expiration of his initial staggered one-year term, if he's willing to serve. They understand he will be retiring soon from the Lackawanna River Corridor Association, and wanted to give him the courtesy of having a year before deciding on a longer-term commitment. And I can confirm that, because Bernie was up at the Flower Show, and I specifically asked him, and he told me, listen, I'm happy to do one year, and let me decide where I'm at after that year. So. City Council has received two applications to date for the Environmental Advisory Council, and will advertise again on June 21st. Davis Trail Rehabilitation Restoration Project. The current trail has dangerous conditions due to uncontrolled drainage and erodible surface. The trail restoration with asphalt will be more stable and maintainable, and more easily accessible than current conditions, but needs to be carefully designed to not concentrate storm water on the trail surface. After the project's funded, the trail will be surveyed, and the profile and cross-section of the trail designed in concert with the new drainage and erosion control features to make the result safer as a paved trail compared to a stone trail. If the grant request is not fully funded, some flatter parts of the trail could be improved with the stone surface in lieu of pavement. Stop sign replacement. Adams Avenue and College Avenue near Merrywood University. Actually, it was, this came to me from a Dunmore Council person. They, I guess, the stop sign up there at College and Adams is completely faded, so you can barely see that it's a stop sign. So this council person from Dunmore had sent the Dunmore DPW, Don, they said, oh, that's actually in Scranton, so they, we're sending a request down through DPW to see if we can get that stop sign replaced, because it's obviously a serious issue. If people don't realize it's a stop sign, we're going to have a serious problem up there. And that's all I have at this time.
5B for an induction and ordinance, amending Chapter 203 of City Code, Contractors, Permits and Inspections to amend the fee schedule for permits for contracting work, also known as building permits.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5B be introduced into its proper committee?
So moved.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
5C for an induction and ordinance, establishing a no parking zone on the easterly side of Capous Avenue from a point 70 feet south of the southerly curb line of Walnut Street to a point 35 north of the northerly curb line of Walnut Street, on the westerly side of Capous Avenue, from a point 35 feet south of the southerly curb line of Walnut Street to a point 95 feet north of the northerly curb line of Walnut Street, to maintain adequate site distance for traffic exiting Walnut Street onto or across Capous Avenue.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5C be introduced to its proper committee?
So moved.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5D for an induction, resolution. Appointment of the City of Scranton's Finance Director, Scranton, Pennsylvania, as a member of the Tax Collection Committee, as the City of Scranton's first alternate delegate. The City of Scranton's Finance Director's term is effective upon execution of the resolution, and will expire on June 27, 2027.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to Item 5D be introduced into its proper committee?
So moved.
Second.
On the question.
On the question. We, I know we were putting the person's title in, rather than a name, but my question is, is Matt Dominus our Finance Director? And if we could just ask this to the Business Department, if he's not our Finance Director, what is he considered at this point in time?
He is, but I'll clarify that, sir.
Thank you.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5E for an introduction, a resolution. Appointment of City of Scranton's Treasurer, Scranton, Pennsylvania, as a member of the Tax Collection Committee, as the City of Scranton's second alternate delegate. The City of Scranton's Treasurer's term is effective upon execution of the resolution, and will expire June 27, 2027.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5E be introduced into its proper committee?
So moved.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5F for an induction, a resolution. Reappointment of William R. Lasers, Scranton, Pennsylvania, as a member of the Tax Collection Committee for a term of four years. William Lasers' holdover term is considered effective and extended upon execution of the resolution, and will expire June 27, 2027.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion, Item 5F be introduced into its proper committee?
So moved.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5G for an introduction, a resolution. Amending Resolution Number 188, 2023- Amending Resolution Number 188, 2023, and further amending Resolution Number 46, 2022, entitled, Amending Number 175, 2021. Authorizing, empowering, and directing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to appoint liaisons between the City of Scranton and Berchheimer, the duly-appointed collector of earned income tax for the Lackawanna County Tax Collection District, for the express purpose of sharing confidential tax information with the district for official purposes, to update City of Scranton representatives authorized to receive confidential tax information, to remove proper names, and allow for the City of Scranton Treasurer to be authorized to receive confidential tax information.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5G be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it? So moved.
5H for an induction, a resolution. Appointment of Connie Bennett, Scranton, Pennsylvania, as a member to the Board of the Scranton Planning Commission for a term of four years. Connie Bennett's term will begin upon execution of the resolution and will expire on May 31,
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5H be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question.
On the question. It was brought up in public comment tonight about the address, and it is a business address. Could we inquire as to whether this is, this individual's business address, or if there's a residence in the city?
I'll do that, Mr. Schuster.
Thanks.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it? So moved.
5I for an induction, a resolution. Authorizing the City of Scranton to accept a monetary donation from the Keystone Sanitary Landfill for a 2008-2023 John Deere P-Tier backhoe loader per Co-Stires contract number, as noted, from Five Star Equipment.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5I be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it? So moved.
5J for an induction, a resolution. Appointment of Christopher McClatchy, Scranton, Pennsylvania, as a member of the Civil Service Commission. Christopher McClatchy's term will be effective immediately upon execution of the resolution, and his term will end with the term of Mayor Paige G. Cognetti, in accordance with the Civil Service Commission authorizing legislation.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5J be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it? So moved.
5K for an induction, a resolution. Advocating permanent funding for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Whole Home Repairs Program.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5K be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it? So moved.
Sixth Order 6A. Reading by Title, File to Council Number 59, 2023, an Ordinance. Establishing a No Parking Zone Along the Westerly Side of North Main Avenue from a Point 75 Feet South of the Southerly Curb Line for Clearview Street to a Point 112 Feet North of the Northerly Curb Line for Clearview Street, on the Southerly Side of Clearview Street from North Main Avenue to North Decker Court, and on the Northerly Side of Clearview Street from North Main Avenue to a Point 60 Feet West of the Westerly Curb Line of North Main Avenue, or just past the entrance to the Used Car Sales parking lot, to allow adequate space for the Colts Bus Pull-Off and to allow adequate site distance for vehicles exiting Clearview Street.
You've heard reading by title of Item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that Item 6A pass, reading by title.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it? So moved.
6B, Reading by Title, File to Council Number 60, 2023, an Ordinance. Establishing a No Parking Zone Along the Southerly Side of Music Street from the Westerly Curb Line of South Webster Avenue, Westerly for a Distance of 115 Feet, and on the Southerly Side of Music Street from the Easterly Curb Line of South Webster Avenue, Easterly for a Distance of 50 Feet, to allow adequate site distance for northbound South Webster Avenue vehicles.
You've heard reading by title of Item 6B. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that Item 6B pass, reading by title.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it? So moved.
6C, Reading by Title, File to Council Number 61, 2023, an Ordinance. Amending the City's Open Burn Prohibition to explicitly allow an exception for public demonstration under certain conditions.
You've heard reading by title of Item 6C. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that Item 6C pass, reading by title.
Second.
On the question.
On the question. If we could just reach out to the administration, see if they could clarify a little bit further. It just seems like a really odd ordinance to be passing. If there's any more clarification that they have, Frank?
I will, sir.
I agree. So after reading this and after listening to Mr. Coyne, I mean, I'm against burning the flag, trust me. You know what I mean? Falls on my, on the ground, I'm one that would do that proper procedure, but I'm also a firm believer of the First Amendment. So the problem I have here is, we have to make an appointment or get permission to exercise that right. I get it might be a safety issue because it's a burn, fire, but, I mean, usually, you know, protests and doing something like this is spontaneous and doesn't, you have to make an appointment, don't have to pay a fee, but I just think, you know, and on air caution, maybe we tighten this up before final reading. Have, you know, have our solicitor look at it and just make sure if there's any way we can just tighten this up a little bit.
Yeah, I'd have to agree there. It seems rather odd. It's a protester needs to apply for a license, they need a burn can with holes no bigger than one inch, have a fire extinguisher present at the time of the protest. It seems, it's just odd ordinance.
If we could give further clarification from the administration as to, you know, why this has to be the way that it's written, at least.
We will, Mr. King.
Thank you, Mr. Rollenberg. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it? So moved.
6D, Reading by Title, File to Council Number 62, 2023, an Ordinance. Authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the City of Scranton to take all necessary actions to implement the HUD 2023 Annual Action Plan for Community Planning and Development Programs to be funded under the Community Development Block Grant Program, Home Investment Partnership Program, and Emergency Solutions Grants Program for the period beginning January 1, 2023.
You've heard reading by title of Item 6D. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that Item 6B pass, reading by title.
Second.
On the question.
I'm going to make a motion to table Item 6D.
So we have a motion to table 6D and a second. This piece of legislation is the Annual Action Plan for 2023. It's being tabled for 30 days to allow for input as to the use of CDBG, home, and ESG funds. On the question. All those in favor of tabling signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it? So moved.
6E, Reading by Title, File to Council Number 63, 2023, an Ordinance. An Ordinance to Provide Revenue for the City of Scranton by imposing a tax upon the privilege of attending or engaging in non-exempt amusements, including every form of entertainment, diversion, sport, recreation, and pastime, requiring all persons, partnerships, associations, and corporations conducting places of amusements. Imposing duties and conferring powers upon the Treasurer of the City of Scranton, prescribing the method and manner of collecting the tax imposed by this ordinance, imposing penalties for the violation thereof, and imposing said tax with adjustments to said tax as previously enacted.
You've heard reading by title of Item 6E. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that Item 6E pass, reading by title.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it? So moved.
6F, Reading by Title, File to Council Number 64, 2023, an Ordinance. Creating overtime reporting requirements for all City of Scranton departments and
You've heard reading by title of Item 6F. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that Item 6F pass, reading by title.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, I think there are a number of valid concerns that were explained to us this evening when we were in our executive session regarding this legislation. And I know last week I had also said that I felt like there were some areas that might have been overlooked, and I was hoping that we would just be able to make some amendments and move forward quickly on it, because I do think that our overtime tracking is important. And I have concerns, just like my colleagues do, over the use of overtime and how it's frequently exceeded the budget in certain departments over the past several years that I've been on council. So I do want to do what we can as a council to rectify and correct that. But I, you know, with that, those genuine concerns that there are over this legislation, I do want to motion to table Item 6F tonight so that we could work through those and make sure that we are, that we're not putting ourselves in a bad place with this piece of legislation.
And I would second that, and I agree, I would like to get further explanation on all departments, on how it affects all of the apartments.
Okay, there's been a motion.
On the question, I do feel that this should move forward. Between now and final passage, we do have some time. The Law Department does know that they could send their suggestions over to council. I would like to push the council to move this forward in the seventh order and let the Law Department give their suggestions and how we should move forward with this if they find that they have some concerns.
Okay, so there's been a motion and a second to, well, you're going to be able to speak on the question. So there's been, there's been a motion and a second to table Item 7A. On the question.
So on the question, I'm going to vote not to table. The city's administration has had this piece of legislation in their lap for three weeks, four weeks now. All right? All of a sudden, we hear what they don't like about it. I don't agree with what they don't like about it. There's some pieces I do agree, certain pieces I don't. So to stall this, table this, and then, I know how this game works. We're never going to see this legislation come back. So I'd rather keep it in motion, and then, you know, between now and next week, we tweak it. I don't think they want to tweak it. I don't think they want it at all. So if we table it, there's a good chance it doesn't come back. That's why I'm voting no to table, and yes, of course, to move it forward.
Okay. I have, on the question, I have some concerns, although I'm not against wanting to make sure that we properly track overtime, absolutely for that, 100%. But I am, I do have some concerns as they relate to unions and contracts and things that may be brought up by the administration, and I would prefer to make sure that any legislation that we pass with respect to this is done correctly, and therefore, I will be supporting tabling this. So there's been a motion to table and a second. I'm going to do a roll call, please.
Mr. Smarle?
So a motion to table.
Motion to table, yes.
Mr. Schuster?
No.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
No.
Mr. King?
So 7A has been tabled.
6F. So just to put it out there.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I apologize. 6F.
We do exceed our budget line items yearly. The gears are turning in the Law Department, so they have it ahead of them. I'd like to see some of those suggestions that they have come down so we could put it back on the table to pass this ordinance.
Seventh Order 7A. For consideration by the Committee on Public Works for adoption, Resolution Number 239, 2023. Authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into any and all documents necessary to Pennsylvania American Water Company, Aditi Beesman, and Right-Away to construct, operate, and repair a combined sewage overflow containment tank in the vicinity of the 100 block of Wells Street.
What is the recommendation, the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of Item 7A.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smarle?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
I hereby declare Item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B, For Consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 240, 2023. Ratifying and Approving the Execution and Submission of the Grant Application by the City of Scranton to the Department of Community and Economic Development for up to $250,000 to be used towards the Davis Trail Rehabilitation Restoration Project.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of Item 7B.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smarle?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
I hereby declare Item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C, For Consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 241, 2023. Reappointment of Tom Welby, Scranton, Pennsylvania, to serve as a member of the Scranton Municipal Recreation Authority for an additional five-year term. Tom Welby's term is effective upon execution of the resolution and will expire on May 31, 2028.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7C.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smarle?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
I hereby declare Item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D, For Consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 242, 2023. Appointment of Joanna Hopper, Ph.D., Scranton, Pennsylvania, as a member of the Environmental Advisory Council for a term of three years. Joanna Hopper's term is effective upon execution of the resolution and will expire on May 31, 2026.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7D, as amended.
Second.
On the question.
What was the as amended portion?
We removed chair.
Chairpiece, yeah, right. Thank you.
So once again, I just want to make sure that it's Item 7D, as amended. So there's been a motion and a second. On the question, any further?
No, on the question, what we did was amend that so this person wasn't dedicated to be the chair of the committee, the committee as a body can decide who their chairperson may be.
Correct. So they'll vote on that once we have the five people impaneled. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smarle?
Yes.[1699.23] Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7D as amended legally and lawfully adopted.
7E, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, resolution number 243 2023, appointment of Jessica Nolans, Scranton, Pennsylvania, as a member of the Environmental Advisory Council for a term of two years. Jessica Nolans' term is effective upon execution of the resolution and will expire May 31st, 2025.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7E.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7E legally and lawfully adopted.
7F, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, resolution number 244 2023, appointment of Bernard McGurles, Scranton, Pennsylvania, as a member of the Environmental Advisory Council for a term of one year. Bernard McGurles' term is effective upon execution of the resolution and will expire on May 31st, 2024.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7F.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7F legally and lawfully adopted.
7G, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, resolution number 245 2023, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the city of Scranton's grant application to the Department of Community and Economic Development for up to $300,000 for the Legas Creek Echo Restoration Project.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7G.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7G legally and lawfully adopted.
7H, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, resolution number 246 2023, appointment of Sergeant Scott J. Gassenmeyer, Dunmore, Pennsylvania, to the position of Parks and Recreation Director effective May 22nd, 2023.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7H.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, I'd just like to remind council that this is a violation of city code as well as the newly formed handbook, that we would be voting on this person, well, that he started his position prior to our vote and that he is being voted on this position prior to receiving a waiver.
Also, on this, on the question, so, yeah, we got the handbook, folks, we got it, it's, you can see it, it clearly states that any appointments like this need advice and consent from council before they're hired. This gentleman has been hired for a couple of weeks now. Also, if there's a waiver requested, residency waiver, it needs to be done before he's hired, so this, there's two strikes against, against the code and, and the new employee handbook. So, but last week I said that if Sergeant Gassenmeyer confirmed to us that he's going to move into the city, he'll need a waiver, but that's good enough to me, he verbally communicated that, we have that in an email, so I thank him for his service as a sergeant, I'm thanking him for, for actively looking for a house in the city. So with that said, I'll vote yes for this appointment.
So back on the question, I will be voting no, I think that's great that he's looking for a home in the city, I hope he does find a home in the city, I feel, actions speak louder than words, we have a waiver coming up next, if the waiver was removed from our agenda, I may be a yes at that point, but I'm going to be voting no for this.
I was also happy to, to see the rules that we received tonight, and it is important to me that in the future we do receive, receive this legislation prior to the person starting their position, because it does put us in a more difficult position to approve that person that's, that's already started, that's, that's not why I'm planning on approving this appointment tonight, I do think that he'll, he'll do a great job in the position, and, and I am supportive of the appointment, but I, I do want to make sure that we're receiving it beforehand, because I don't think it should be too difficult to put this legislation together and to get it to our desks and for it to just take a few more weeks before the person gets fully onboarded and started in their position.
Right, and now that we have our handbook, I plan to meet with the mayor next week and indicate to her that in the future, moving forward, council, we, we don't want anyone starting in any positions moving forward until it's been approved with our consent, so I will be supporting this this evening now.
And I'm just going to remind everybody, it's been occurring for three years, the same thing over and over, I hope it does change into the future, he should have spoke to his employer to not put him in this position for me to be voting no.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
No.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7H legally and lawfully adopted.
7I, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, resolution number 247 2023, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to waive the residency requirements for Sergeant Scott J. Gassenmeyer in his capacity as Parks and Recreation Director for the city of Scranton.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7I.
Second.
On the question.
So on the question, I just stated that this gentleman has, has committed to moving into the city, and he has six months to do it, but then the next piece of legislation is a waiver for him not to. So first of all, I've been against waivers since, as long as I'm, I'm council, and like I said last week, I'll repeat it, I'm a God-fearing Irish Catholic that wouldn't give Jesus Christ a waiver, because it's not fair, and, and him even, this legislation in front of us doesn't make any sense when he's already committed, and also, once again, take a look at the new handbook, it violates.
I think, I think you've raised a good point here, and, and since Mr. Gassenmeyer has indicated that he is in fact looking to move, I, I would guess that Scranton would be a good place to move, so I don't necessarily see a reason for the waiver either.
I'm also in agreement, I don't see how this is, this is needed if that's the case, so I was looking for that clarity, and I'm glad that, that we received the email communication from Mr. Gassenmeyer about his, his intentions to move into the city of Scranton, so therefore I don't think a waiver is needed.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
No.
Mr. Schuster?
No.
Dr. Rothschild?
No.
Mr. McCandrew?
No.
Mr. King?
No. The resolution dies for, I guess, 0.5 vote.
7J, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, resolution number 248 2023, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to waive the residency requirements for attorney Catherine Katie Kennedy in her capacity as First Assistant City Solicitor in the Law Department for the city of Scranton.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7J.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, I'll remind everyone again that this is also a violation of the handbook and our, our city code, as she already started the position prior to her vote coming before council, I did mention that last year this was made a full-time position at, I would think, $77,000, which is higher than the Parks and Rec Director, so I think it would be a good idea for her to move into the city, and I will be voting no for this waiver.
On the question, so I hate to repeat myself, but there's a handbook out there, guys, and it states that the waiver has to come before us, before the hire. I've always been against waivers, it's kind of like the Oprah Winfrey Show, now you get a waiver, you get a waiver, you get a waiver, that's not how it's supposed to be, it's, it's defined in the code, it's defined in the charter, and now there's a handbook in front of us, and these waivers are still coming, so of course I'm a no.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
No.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
No.
Mr. King?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7J legally and lawfully adopted.
7K, for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for Adoption, resolution number 249 2023, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to fiscal year 2024 appropriations through the Federal Emergency Management Agency for up to $2,343,750 to create an emergency operations and training center on the property currently owned by the Career Technology Center of Lackawanna County.
What's the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7K.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7K legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, no business at this time.
There's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned.